Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, this is the Brainerd City Council. So if you think you're somewhere else, time to go. Otherwise, welcome. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:30 and ask Administrator Bergman to please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bado.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like four pairs of jeans.
All right. Item number four is the approval of the agenda. We're looking for a voice vote and a motion to approve the agenda.
So move Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one roll call motion. There will be no separate discussion unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Motion by Stunek.
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are on to number six. Mayor Bado, please clear the aisles and announce the community member of the month.
That's right. It is that wonderful time of the month in which we celebrate our community members. This month, we are going to do something a little different one more time. This traditionally, we would like to be an award that goes more to individuals. However, we had another scenario in our city in which I think we should be turning our speakers off, in which we should be celebrating the volunteers and individuals that we have. So this month, we are celebrating the Brainerd J.C.'s for their execution of the ice fishing contest. And the main reason why I wanted to speak about this is that as a J.C.'s member, I will say that the ice fishing contest is not an event that I participate in because it is cold. And the mayor doesn't like being out there freezing his butt off. So I've always appreciated the members that go out and take care of this event. And usually, there's somewhere, and Councilman Johnson can speak to this as well, at 470, somewhere around there, volunteers out on the ice.
Community-wide volunteers, yeah. A fraction of that is J.C.'s.
Yep. So this is a huge event that takes a lot of people. And this year, with about 50 people, they were able to pull off an event and take that and shift it completely online and make it something that could be done statewide. Some of the numbers, I'm just going to pull them up here because I don't want to get them wrong. And then, of course, my phone decides that it's not going to let me see them. But we were looking at over 4,700 people that participated, 4,100 different fish. And the J.C.'s had to go through 10,450 or so photos to verify those fish. So, you know, as it sounds like you're just holding a Zoom meeting and, you know, people are winning prizes, this is something that was much bigger, as it always is, and took a lot more time and effort to take care of than it normally would with a much smaller group of people. So for this month, the community members of the month goes to the Brainerd J.C.'s. So we want to thank them.
Certificate signed by, oh.
Right, everybody.
Every J.C. gets a certificate signed by the mayor.
Yep. A personal handshake from the mayor.
But you got to come to Street Fest.
There, you had to ruin it, didn't you? All right. Item number seven is our council committee report. Seven A is the Personal and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight items tonight, all with action on them, I believe. The first item is a consider a wage grid step placement from Glenn Holst, Street Maintenance Three. So right here, we have Glenn Holst, who was opted into the legacy plan a couple of years ago. And then now, during this year's negotiating cycle, he decided to opt out of the legacy plan and onto the grid plan because it was advantageous for him. Because our grid plan is very advantageous for our employees. But we placed him on step five of the grid plan per our employee policy manual. He is here tonight, and if you want to hear him speak, Mr. President, he's here. He's here to request that we, the council, takes action to move him to step six. But the motion is...
Wait, don't make the motion yet.
I won't make the motion yet.
Thank you. Anything else you want to outlay as to what the argument is?
Was that the long and short of it, Connie, Chris? Yeah?
Any questions of Chairman Johnson? Glenn, anything you want to add to the entire council while you're here?
I can tell them what I spoke earlier.
You know what? I'm going to give you the shot before he makes the motion. There you go.
Make sure you set the microphone lower down there.
You have to say your name and address. Because there's people who can't see you.
Okay. My name is Glenn Holst, address of 9908 St. Mathijs Road, Brainerd, Minnesota. I've, 27 years ago this March, I was hired at the city. 10 years prior to that, I was hired at Anderson Brothers Construction. I started as a truck driver and on to become a working foreman and a heavy equipment operator. That was all done within 10 years. In March of 1994, I started with the street and sewer department. I had nine years on the sewer department as a maintenance one. In 2003, I was promoted to truck driver, maintenance two, till 2015. I was also a backup operator in the same time period from 2003 to 2015, meaning backup operator, I was able to operate any piece of equipment that the city has. In 2015, I was promoted to maintenance three, which is a heavy equipment operator. This year, during union negotiations, the city asked me to come to the grid and be placed at step five. With my 37 years of experience and the knowledge of the city, I am asking to be put on step six. I operate every piece of equipment on the street side with the working knowledge of the sewer camera and the sewer vac truck. One of the hardest pieces of equipment that there is to run, for those of you that know what a motor grader is, it is a big piece of equipment. It's 27 feet long, it stretches out to be 14 feet, or I'm sorry, 16 feet wide, and it weighs almost 40,000 pounds. It's not something you just get into and just say, well, I'm going to go for a ride. You make the machine work, and you have to have the responsibility behind that to make that thing do its thing. Sorry, I lost my spot. In the wintertime, also, when we go out brushing, even though it is not put right in front of you or set on, you're basically the guy that is in the loader, which is myself, you are also put out kind of as a crew leader. If you get the residents that come out and they want to talk to somebody, usually it is myself or whoever's in the loader that goes up and talks to them, basically, because you're a maintenance three and you've dealt with these people before. So with that being said, I feel the city has shown past practice that you can be placed at a higher wage because of experience, whether you are new to the grid or an existing employee. Thanks for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask. Answer them.
Excuse me, Glenn.
What?
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Holst while he's standing here? I do, but I'm going to ask you, do you mind if I ask you a question, Glenn?
No, not at all.
Argument, we just recently settled your union contract. Why didn't you bring this up then?
Because I did not know at the time you could bring it up.
Okay.
You know.
That was my only question.
I had seen the thing with the police department and stuff like that prior to that, so, and I was, you know, I was new to going from the old to the new.
Got it. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Holst? Okay, thanks. We're going to make a motion, then we're going to argue back and forth, but you won't get to talk at that point. You're up, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, the motion out of committee was to move to go with staff's recommendation to deny Glenn Holst's request for an adjustment to step six of the Street Maintenance Three wage grid effective January 1st, 2021, an ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor or against the motion?
I'd like to speak to it.
Yeah. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This wasn't about the money. It wasn't about the value that Mr. Holst obviously provides to the city. It's only $1.30 an hour, which amounts to what $2,700 a year. It's not devastating to the budget. The reason the majority of us, two out of the three of us, voted to go with staff's recommendation is this is what we've done to other employees. We've put them on the wage grid at the next highest wage where they're not getting a pay cut. And it's what we've done to all 100 or so employees that we've put on the wage grid. And we just thought we would treat everybody equally, as we do, as we try to do with our collectively bargained agreements. You know, another thing I was apprehensive about was individually negotiating salaries when there is a collectively bargained agreement. And I don't really want to set a precedent of letting individual employees come up and just individually negotiate their salary whenever they feel like it, because honestly, we have a lot of people in this city who are not on step six but have 20, 25 years' experience and probably should be on step six, based on their experience. But they aren't there because the salary administration plan we have in place, that we have the power to change in the future, but the one we have in place right now calls for him to be on step five. And that was the motion out of committee. And Kevin was our no vote out of committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Any other discussion for or against the motion?
I'll just make a comment.
Mr. Stunek.
I was the lone no vote in committee because of his experience, not only with the city, but his prior experience with other companies coming here, his ability to run heavy machinery that other employees cannot run. I just think sometimes there's an exception. I believe this is an exception. That's why I sided with the employee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. I'm going to make a comment. I am, I'm going to vote against the motion, so in favor of Mr. Holst. And actually, not for the reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Stunek, although I have no doubt, and I have experienced the man's expertise in a motor grader. It's phenomenal. But I'm, this is the first go-around after we put the grid in. And I agree with everything Gabe said. We should set a precedence, and we should stick by it. We haven't been able to do that prior to the grid, and I'll bring up Chief McQueston. When it was time to bring him up as chief, we brought him in at a higher wage because he asked for it because of his experience, and we gave it to him. I understand Mr. Holst is doing the same thing, and I also understand that he may have done it at the time of negotiations, had he known. But this is the first time that we've done this from a grid perspective. I want to get people on the grid. Gabe's laid that out perfectly, and I agree 100% with him. But, and if every single employee comes up and asks for more money, I'll take every single one, one at a time. But this time, it's Glenn Holst, and I'm going to vote in his behalf because I think he made a good argument, and I think, I think the precedence is a little murky at this point, based on what we've really done in the past. Not on what we want to do, based on our employee policy, but what we've really done in the past, and not too distant past. So, okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Pritchett.
I have a question. I don't know if this is for Ms. Schuber or who could answer this, but if, in lieu of his experience, if he were coming onto the grid now, would he be step five, step six, step four?
I can answer that.
Chris, you go ahead and answer that.
Thank you, council. With our policy, what it is, is that when someone wants to go to the grid, when they make this election, it is the step that is higher than their previous wage. So the step higher than his previous wage is step five. He is asking to be placed at step six instead. Is that what you've asked?
If he were a new employee, you know, like if you were just looking based off of his experience and how the steps are set up, where would he fall is what I'm looking at.
So our normal hiring ranges are steps one through four. That's all staff can do. We can look at previous experience, but that's looking at experience, education. I do not feel he would go to step six based on his current experience at this point. At least, that would not be staff's recommendation.
Ms. O'Day.
I will say that it's a good question, but he's not a new employee. So my general feeling is that I'm going to agree with Kelly on this one. I do, I do agree with Gabe in that we probably shouldn't set precedent with this time after time after time, but if it's going to come up when somebody does move up to the grid, that's essentially what we want. So I'm going to support Glenn on this one. That's about all I got.
Tiffany.
Yeah, so if, I mean, I appreciate the arguments that both Kelly and Kevin have made, but if we don't straighten out our precedent now, we're never going to. You know, if we keep making exceptions and one-offs, we're never going to sort it out and get to a regular following, the way that we want to.
Thank you. Tad.
I think I'm going to vote against the motion. I do agree, we're trying to get people on the grid, but we want to set it up so it's not one size fits all. So I think we want to, we want to do it in ways where we can tweak when needed. But I agree, we do need to be consistent going forward, but I think the goal is to get people on the grid in the right spots. So I'm going to vote against it.
Anything new and improved to say?
Is there a motion to table it? Just kidding.
I will say, if I may.
Do you have something I could pluck my eyeballs out with? Okay, go ahead, Ms. O'Day.
I guess my argument, Councilman Stingline, there's only a limited number of these guys that are, we're trying to get two go to the grid. All the new employees are just automatically going on the grid. So setting precedent in that way isn't going to last forever. It's just a matter of getting through this transition. I think it's going to help overall. So that's why I agree with that.
Okay. You don't need to talk three more times.
I'm entitled to one more.
I know, I'm giving it to you right now.
I don't, I don't.
You're in the chair. Hearing no more discussion, asking for no more, and ignoring all the rest. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll. The motion is to deny Mr. Holst's request.
Pritchett.
No.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
No.
O'Day.
No.
Stunek.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
No. Mr. Stunek, please make another motion.
Okay.
Let's go.
I make a motion that we side with the employee of Glenn Holst and raise him from step five to step six on the grid.
Second.
Motion by Stunek, second by Tad. Hearing no meaningful discussion, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
No.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion passes. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you have fun? We've got another one.
But this time, you have to say something completely different.
But it's a completely different situation. Let's get going. Chris, I might need your help. Don't go too far from the microphone. So item number two is consider a wage step grid placement from Marvin Bush. So Marvin Bush was a maintenance two with the city for a long time in the street department. He is the internal hire we had when we posted for that mechanic position we created last year, which is maintenance three. So we hired him, as of January 1st, he applied, we offered a job, we hired him, and then we placed him at a step that was the next highest step on the grid from what he was making in his previous position. And that was step three at 2,766 an hour. He is requesting that we move him to step four. Now, the nuance in this one, and Chris, help me out if I'm wrong here, if she may, Mr. Chair, but...
She may.
When he was at maintenance two, he would get paid a wage differential when he was doing maintenance three work, which was part of his job. He did do maintenance three work. That wage differential he was paid for the hours he was at working maintenance three work is higher than step three on the grid where we have placed him. But it wasn't his full-time job, maintenance three, but when he was doing maintenance three work, it was higher than what step three is right now. So, you know, I'm not going to make the motion, but the committee went with staff's recommendation to deny. Is there, Chris, there's anything else I need to add to this situation?
Ms. Schuber?
Maybe just to clarify it a little bit, in the union contract, they have something called out-of-class pay. Mr. Bush was a maintenance two employee. Maintenance two is usually a truck driver. He is very talented, and that is why he's been promoted to a mechanic. And so during those times when he was able to, he would help us out with mechanic duties. At that point, he was paid the maintenance three rate. He was a legacy employee, so he got that pay system. So it was higher than what he currently would have got on step three of the wage grid. Yes, it is very confusing. This is one of those hiccups that we discovered through this whole system. At the end of the day, Mr. Bush will be making more money on, as a maintenance three employee on our grid than if he would have stayed as a maintenance two employee. That is why staff had made the recommendation that he be placed at step three. It was still higher than what his full-time truck driver wage was. Not sure if that helps explain it anymore or not, but that's a little bit more of this situation.
Thank you. Okay.
I think that's the background I have.
That's the background. Mr. Bush, anything you want to add to the argument before we take a motion and then you don't get to say anything? Like you want to tear down an engine for us or something?
I got enough of that at home. I don't know what, much...
You got to go right to the microphone, you got to state your name and your address so those people watching on YouTube...
My name is Marvin Bush. My address is 554 Racine Road.
Thank you.
I guess according to my time slips, the two that I got here from the end of December and the end of January, what it shows is that I took a 90% pay cut, or 90 cent pay cut from doing a maintenance three job when I was maintenance two to what I am now, now that I am a full-time maintenance three employee. Except for when I got moved to the grid system, I got a 20 cent raise over my maintenance two work. I don't know if that's pretty well confuses you or...
I'm following you.
Okay, that's, I guess that's about all I got to say.
Okay, stay right there, please. Any questions of Mr. Bush? All right, you're free to say, oh, thank you. And you did not want to make a motion on this?
I do, I do want to make a motion.
Okay, right, okay, you're up, Mr. Chair.
You know, I'm confident. The motion is to go with staff's recommendation, deny Marvin Bush's request for an adjustment to step four of the Street Maintenance Three wage grid, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline, and Mr. Johnson, take us down the road.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the motion. And again, it was a two-on-vote, so Kevin probably has something to say that isn't necessarily the same thing I say. But again, it's not about the employees, how much we like the employer or want him at the city, or how good of an employee he is. This motion was nothing about that. Again, it's a buck 29 an hour. It's another $2,700 a year, not going to break the budget. This one was different from my perspective because he's essentially a new hire. We posted this maintenance three internally. He chose to apply. We chose to interview him, we chose to hire him, he chose to accept the job offer, and he probably at that time would have been within his right to negotiate up to step four at that time. And administratively, staff, Paul and Chris could have just given it to him back in January. But here we are, a month and a half after his hiring, and he's asking for a higher wage step. And I, so that was my reasoning on why I voted no. And also, I don't like individually negotiating wages with union members. I prefer to go the collectively bargained route.
Excellent. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Yes, Mr. Stunek.
As it was pointed out by Mr. Gabe, I was the nay vote. As has been pointed out by a few staff people here today, that this system is very new to our city. And we've only got two employees that have stood up and tried to fight for themselves to make them things better. And like Gabe said, we're not talking a ton of money. So again, I support the staff here. I think looking at that and looking at the situation, I think we've got some glitches we have to clean up, and I think because of that, he deserves the right to have that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny the request.
Pritchett.
No.
Ah.
Yes.
Erickson.
No.
O'Day.
No.
Stunek.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Um, no. Mr. Stunek, care to try again?
I will make a motion to side with Mr. Bush's request and move him from, correct, Chris, step three to step four.
Second.
Step three to step four in the union contract.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stingline.
No.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion carries. Welcome to the grid, gentlemen. All right, Mr. Johnson, take us home.
I'm all for two here, Mr. President.
Oh, that's, I smell good things. I really think you got a winner on the next one.
I might, I might be able to make, at least make contact on this one.
Tiffany, could you take over for Chairman Johnson if he loses the next one?
She's got the same record.
She's going, who is the winner?
The next motion is annual lease agreement with the Office of Congressman Pete Staubert, and the motion is to approve the lease agreement as presented with the Office of Congressman Pete Staubert. ISO move.
Second.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by, by PNF Vice Chair Stunek. Mr. Johnson, what have you got?
This is a standard agreement that he sends to us, and it's $200 a month. That's what it's been for quite some time, and it's not a moneymaker, but it's a good service to our citizens to have our congressman having an office right here at City Hall. So staff recommends approval, and the committee unanimously, unanimously recommended approving this contract.
Anybody want to speak on behalf or against the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That one carries. Congratulations, Chairman Johnson. Try it again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll see if I can get this one. So number four is consider a tentative agreement for IBEW administrative support, 2021, 2022 union contract terms. This has two actions. The first action is a motion to approve the attached 2021, 2022 tentative agreement summary and the attached contracts supporting documents between the city and IBEW, Local Number 31 Administrative Support.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stingline. Any further discussion?
This is, oh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
Yep, this is what we've talked about, what we've negotiated. It's got the two and a half percent cost of living for both legacy and, and grid people, and nothing else to it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none, this is just a motion, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Thank you. The second action on this item is to, is a mo- I move to adopt the attached resolution setting the IBW local number 31 administrative support union wages for 2021, 2022, an ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, item number five, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a clarification regarding employee policy manual step advancement for new hires. Do you want me to explain it before the motion again so we can have discussion and grill Jennifer a little bit, or do you want me to just go with the motion?
If we can make her uncomfortable, let's do it now.
But the, the motion out of committee is to approve City Administrator Bergman's step advancement to step two of the city administrator wage grid effective January 1st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion by Chairman Johnson, second by Stangline. Any discussion?
I've got one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman Johnson.
So this is, we hired Jennifer on January of last year. We didn't get her annual employee redo, employee review done until February 1st of this year. So per the language in our employee policy manual, it says your step increases become effective on January 1st of each year following the employee's performance review. Since her, since we didn't conduct her performance review until February 1st, she wouldn't go to step two until January 1st, 2022, despite being hired like January 5th, 2021. So this motion is to put her on step two effective January 1st, 2021.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item six, please.
Okay, an update on the acting police chief examination process with, and we do have one action item. The Civil Service Commission did meet regarding interim police chief. They did receive one application. They did conduct an interview, and they have pushed to us one certified candidate for an interim police chief for a period of longer than 30 days, and it is current Acting Chief Bestel. So the motion is to appoint Acting Chief Bestel through the end of the year, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Johnson, second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Acting Chief Bestel, I know you're on, you're online. Anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for helping us out. All right, please continue.
Thank you. Next is a, is a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city for the ground storage tank project. This is a standard resolution that we just need to do for some legal reason to be able to reimburse ourselves from bond proceeds we're going to be getting in the future. So the motion is to attach, adopt the attached resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Brainerd to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stangline. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Because I do have one question. And who's our, who's our P, who's our PUC rep? But I, I know Todd Wicklund's here. This may sound crazy, but we're taking two large water containers, which you can see down there, and turning it into one big one, yes? But the terrorist on TV, and I'm not joking, always wants to attack the water supply. Do we really want to just have one? I mean, is it, it's a very serious question. It seems like we were safer having two in case something happened to one. And that's the first thing I thought of when I saw those pictures is, is there, is there, are we going to regret this, Todd? You have to say who, say who you are.
Todd Wicklund, 925 122nd Street, southwest Brainerd. Actually, the, the reason why it's designed is it's 2 million gallons or two separate tanks within this structure. The reason this design came the way it is is because just that location, you would be difficult to do two separate ones. The cost of doing two separate ones would be in, in excess of what we are planning here, what has been designed at the 35% design level at the time. So that's the recommendation going forward. And we started to look at two separate ones, but that ended up being a more costly affair than the plan that I think the pitcher was given to them.
Yep.
Yeah, type of thing.
That's why I asked.
So, and in fact, you know, next Tuesday at our, at our board meeting, the, the engineers will be there to talk about the project. So, you know, there will be, you know, representation here from the council so they can, you know, ask those questions too if they want to at that time.
Did you say that large tank is compartmentalized?
Right.
Oh, okay.
They're two separate.
Within one.
Just one building on the outer part is, is, is containing two separate tanks, so.
Well, I, I was, my question, while sounding facetious, was very serious, and I, I hope that we have some security involved.
Right. I mean, and the other thing is...
With our water supply.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we need to, to make sure we, you know, keep it safe, but this, you know, we've had two separate, in fact, if you go by the old tank, there has a tree growing out of it. So there is some root protrusions in the, in the concrete tank, so if it tastes kind of like an elm tree, you'll know. But, so that's the reason why we're moving, you know, forward. We're getting ready to potentially, it's actually a two-phase project. The second phase, we're looking to, to go to the state on the bonding bill, but we would like to go out for bids here like in May and possibly get the old tank tore out of there and the new, first half of the new tank put in place before it's all winter again next year. So that's the plan right now, but there will be some presentation at our meeting next week if, if further discussion.
Any other questions for, yeah?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, since Todd's up here.
Yep.
And I won't have to ask you tomorrow. These renderings look like it, it may in fact end up being a brick building?
It's going to be impressed on the, on the concrete. It's not going to be a separate brick.
But it'll be impressed concrete, so it'll have some aesthetic to it. It won't just be a steel building in the middle of the park.
Yeah, it's all going to be concrete, so it's going to be, and then we can pick the stain, the color that will match. We, we started looking at the cost. It's like 700, 800,000 more for the ledge and for the, for all the brick. And so this was, this is the kind of the design that we're moving forward with at the, you know, at this point, so.
Well, that, that's good, because I remember when we rezoned, a concern from the neighborhood was they're just going to get a big ugly industrial building in the, in the middle of their park. But this doesn't look so bad. Thank you.
It looks nice. Did we, do we have a motion on this? I apologize.
Yeah, the motion was to adopt the resolution declaring our intent.
Thank you, Mr. Wicklund. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman. We have a motion. We have a second. Please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Chairman Johnson, bring us home.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I thought we had saved money on employees in one and two, so we were feeling a little rich. And the motion coming out of committee for number eight here is to authorize a $500 donation to the Historical Society, paid out of the special projects budget line item, an ISO move.
We have a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
You'll see in the packet that usually, over the last 10 years, we give a donation. There isn't a record of them sending us a request or us sending them a donation last year. Don't know what happened there, probably related to COVID. But for the last eight years or so, it's been about 300 bucks a year. Since we didn't give last year, we felt, what the heck, we'll give $500 this year.
Appreciate that clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Safety and Public Works Chairman, Mr. O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works tonight, we had five items, four of them being action items. First item is a request to authorize improvements 21-01 and 21-05, the 2021 Seal Coat Project Competitive Bidding, an ISO move.
Second.
I have a motion by O'Day, a second by Pritchett. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I can talk about it for a minute. Basically, it's the regular seal coating projects for the city. The streets and specific streets are Buffalo Hills Lane, Mississippi Drive, Jackson Street, Oak Street, Williams Street, Northwest 3rd, 5th, 7th, and 8th Streets, James Street, Maple Street, and East River Road. Not all of those roads completely, but at least sections of those roads. And then we have three parking lots that are city lots, the fire hall, the northeast fire hall as well, and the police, police station parking lots. The total for these projects is 156,890 dollars and 15 cents. 6,535 dollars and 90 cents of that will be coming out of the capital improvement fund. So it stays pretty much right on budget with the 150,000 that is allocated. And, yeah, Mr. Sandy?
I'll actually just clarify that. Thank you, Mike. 156,000 is the estimated cost for just the street portion. That 6,000 was the, the parking lots themselves. So those are the estimated costs at this time, but like I said in committee, those are usually a little bit conservative, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Any discussions on the project? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Item number two is more informational. It's not an action item. It's just an update on the Highway 25 Bridge Replacement Aesthetic Treatments that are now being proposed. Basically, this was a project that Mayor Bedeau and former council member Lambert had worked with the, the state on putting in some aesthetic improvements in the bridge. And if Mayor Bedeau, if you want to talk about it a little bit, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so, uh, council member Jan Lambert at the time, myself, and Paul Sandy had a Zoom meeting with MinDOT, and we went over some potential looks for that bridge and the structure of it. I, I will say that I was very pleased with that conversation. It didn't feel like we were being dictated to. It felt like this was a conversation where they were actually asking us what we wanted to see happen with that. There are a portion of the funds that can be used from the total project to work on aesthetics, and I'm going to have to say that it, it looks beautiful. This is one of the things that I know we've had talks of working on is the corridors entering the city and exiting the city, and this is a fantastic start to that process as 25th is a route that people use coming into that northeast corridor. So as a northeast resident, I, I want to say thank you to MinDOT and to Paul Sandy for working on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please continue.
That's pretty much the gist of it. I think it was just informational for everybody to be able to see what the, what the renderings have brought us.
Thank you. Keep going.
Number three, we have a update on the project 19-02, 2022, Kynna Lakes State Trail Construction, which includes in part this Highway 25 Bridge. What we came out with for a motion, it was a little bit, a little bit confusing the motion, but basically, we're, we're motioning to affirm the final design and move forward with, with the planning and overall design for this section of the Kynna Lakes Trail, including, what we were including, the...
Mr. Chair, I was, I was a second on that, so including kind of the alternates as well.
Including the alternate routes as well. So I'm sure there's going to be some discussion on this, but that is the motion, if I'm not clear. Second?
Everybody understand the motion. We'll start with that. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I know, as long as I'm within a quarter million dollars, go ahead and nod. The DNR gave us like a million bucks to finish this trail. Yeah, 1.1, something like that. Now, this is coming in from SEH that to finish it, to get it done, spend that million dollars, and then it's still as high as 2.3 million dollars total. So another 1.2, that needs to come from somewhere, most likely from our pockets, right? So, and, and this is all preliminarily and whatever. But my question is, is there a point, or are we spending the DNR's money on SEH right now, or are we spending our money? We're spending the DNR's money on SEH. So we can continue to spend that million, we can continue to work on this project until the million dollars is exhausted, and then, and then make the decision on if we want to do it or not?
Yeah, Mr. Sandy, I think that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. So what we're, what we're hoping to get out of this conversation tonight is we've been stuck in this preliminary design phase for a while, and we're really looking for, we wanted to get that number out to you guys so that you're aware that the potential cost of this project could exceed the number that the DNR has given us. So the 1.1 million can be used on design and construction fees on this project. The idea of moving into final design and kind of solidifying the project's scope and making sure that our numbers are accurate, the only way to do that is to continue working on it. And by doing that, we're also hoping to put in some safeguards that when we do get a final plan set done, that we would have the project broken out into alternatives. So them being, they might change a little bit as we go, but there's a map, I think the last map attached on the, the agenda request item, that we would break the project into three alternates. You guys would recall with the, the airport utility extension, there was some concerns about costs with that project when we were going through this, and we broke that project into four separate alternatives. The contractors are able to bid on the whole project, and then we can select which portions we do once the bids come back to kind of fit the project to the funding. We're hoping that these costs come down significantly. You can see in that cost breakdown, there is a 20% contingency, which is a pretty hefty contingency at this point. And there's some other items that I think will really be able to narrow down once we get into this final design process. Like I said, the design and construction can be used for those funds, so it's, it's, I, I think we'll have a good project when it's all said and done, but we also have safeguards in place, and that's the reason we wanted to kind of get this affirmation with moving forward in the final design while still having a safeguard by kind of breaking the project up into alternates so that we don't get ourselves into a pickle where we have a bid and it's 2.3 million dollars, and we don't have any kind of safeguards in place.
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you for the answer. That was very enlightening. So I support the motion. I mean, the motion is to continue to move forward with the alternates. You know, as far as the 20% contingency, I see a lot of contingency between 28th Street and the power plant there going through that wetland. That, that could get pretty expensive, but they probably have it accounted for in here. But I, I think this is a great project. I think we should keep moving forward. Hopefully, the costs do come down. If they don't, hopefully, we find some way to get the money to finally get this project done and done. Thank you.
Plant the money tree in the new water container. All right. Any further discussion? Y'all understand the motion and what we're voting on? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman O'Day, please continue.
Item number four is a request to approve geotechnical services agreement with Braun Intertech for improvement 19-02 Kynna Lakes State Trail Construction. So I, I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day?
President, so this is basically the first next step in this process. So what the, what Braun Intertech is going to do is go in and, and take out, is it seven? Seven large borings of that section of the trail that go through the wetlands and basically do some, some analysis of it and bring forward the, the engineering that we're, we're going to be able to see what we need to actually put the trail through there. So they need to do this while the ground is frozen, and so it's, it'd be, it'd be good to get this moving now. I believe the costs were 13,900, and that would be refundable through the Minnesota DNR 11 or 1.1 million.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please continue.
Number five is a motion to affirm competitive bidding for the Street and Sewer Edition Project, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by T. Erickson, just for all time's sake. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, Mr. O'Day, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I've got an explanation, I guess I can give you one. We, we decided not to use the Sourcewell bidding. It was a couple meetings ago. There was some miscommunication, so this has already started. We just wanted to have an official affirmation with that miscommunication that we can go ahead and start this bidding. The bidding will start officially on March 11th, 2021 at 2:00 PM, but the ads for the bids are already out, so that's why we want to do this today.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. Chair? Thank you very much. Item eight, unfinished business. 8A is the call for applicants. This is informational. Mayor Bedeau, do you wish to take your moment in the sun and call for applicants?
Oh, it is always bright and sunshiny over here in the mayor's suite. We have call for applicants as per usual. Once again, those applications are available at our website, www.cibrainerd.mn.us. You can call City Hall if you can't understand my speaking, if it's too quick for you. All right, so we've got the recommendations. The following expire. Their terms expire...
Their terms expire 12/31 of said year. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2024. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, it's a long one, and there are three of those available, and they expire 2022. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2022. And the last of what I have, the term expiring of September 7 of said year. The Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2025, and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnson, did you ever consider putting a spotlight on the mayor?
I have considered it.
All right.
I mean, we can put it on the next agenda. Strobe light, maybe?
Listen, it's less about the...
I'm thinking neon.
It's less about the light and more about the microphone. If we can get you a nice, good stand-up comedian mic, that would be appreciated.
All right, and I have Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, one term to expire 2023, and of course, the Water Tower Committee always has room for at least two more. Item nine is new business. Item 9A is the consideration of an appeal at 705 19th Street, the rental house, rental license administrative decision. I don't know who's got this. I apologize. We got to find it.
We need Development Director Chansky.
Mr. Chansky, are you with us?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually going to give it just a second and hand it over to City Attorney Lengel. As this is appealed, he'll just remind the council how this process is going to go.
Thank you, Mr. Lengel.
Mr. President, Council, so... There we go. Mr. President, Council, so a letter was issued to a property owner concerning a duplex that was being remodeled, as I understand it. And during that process, it was determined or discovered that the permit for that duplex had expired, which is relevant because of the fact that it's in an R1 single-family district, meaning the structure is non-conforming, and the use is non-conforming in that district. And thereafter, Mr. Chansky issued a letter indicating that because the permit had expired more than a year ago, and the non-conforming use of that structure had been discontinued for more than a year under the ordinance, they could not continue it any further. That decision by Mr. Chansky has been appealed to the City Council. The City Council is here tonight to hear that appeal by the landowner or his attorney, Mr. Person. And then the council will have to make a decision or direct staff to provide the council with a written findings in a resolution form, format for the next meeting, which is probably the process I will use regardless of what direction you go tonight with respect to the appeal. So we can certainly, Mr. Chansky, do you want to get into the facts more, or do you want me to do that?
I can go ahead, go.
All right, Mr. Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as Attorney Lengel said on Thursday, the February 4, I did issue a letter to Mr. Brad Person, who is a representative, legal representative for Mr. Chad Schwendeman, who owns the property at 705 19th Street Southeast. What had occurred is that one of my staff members was conducting an inspection on a building permit on that property. And at that time, during the inspection, realized that this actually had been a rental. Remembered that had been a rental, set up as a duplex. Nothing as part of the remodel made it seem that it was going to be returned to a single-family use, but maintained as a duplex. My staff member did reach out to Mr. Schwendeman and confirmed that that was the intent, was to keep it as a duplex. It is in an R1 single-family residential district. This zone does not permit two-family or multifamily uses. And the most recent rental license for 705 19th Street Southeast expired on May 31 of 2018. Section 515-15-6B of the Code of Ordinance states a non-conforming residential use that had a rental license expired more than 365 days from date of license expiration cannot be reestablished as a non-conforming use. Mr. Person did reach out to me after his client had contacted him. So on Thursday afternoon, on the 4th, I, after having issued my letter to Mr. Brad Person stating why the license would not be able to be renewed, or new license acquired, I should say, Mr. Person submitted a formal appeal on behalf of Mr. Schwendeman to myself, and requesting that my decision be appealed to the zoning, border zoning appeals, which is the City Council. So in this case, the border zoning appeals is to determine whether or not I, as a zoning administrator, correctly interpreted and applied the requirements of the City of Brainerd zoning code in making my decision to deny rental licensure of the property at 705 19th Street Southeast.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Is there any questions, Mr. Chansky, before we turn it over to Mr. Person? Seeing none, thank you, David. We will probably get back to you. Mr. Person, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. We can't, there you are. You're up, explain your argument, young man.
Sure. I think your city attorney and staff did a pretty good job of explaining the facts, and we don't dispute the facts. It's really more of a legal question. We argue that under state statute, there's two protected non-conformities here. One is the use, and we do agree on that front, that it had not been used for a year. So you could argue that they abandoned that vested right, and now they got to meet city ordinance standards. But the second way it's non-conforming is the structure itself. It was built and always has been used as a duplex. You know, it's got two of everything. It's structurally a duplex, and that has not changed. So I tried to give one example of it. It was a setback issue. The fact that they didn't, you know, use it as a duplex for a year wouldn't change the fact that it's too close to a lot line. I don't think you'd make them move the building in that case. Or if this was a fourplex, a bigger structure, it would be more, it would sound more out of line to make it into a single family, because the structure is still the structure. Under state law, for a structural non-conformity, it says that cities can't change or require the applicant to change the structure unless it burns down. And even in that scenario, they have a certain amount of time to rebuild it the way it exactly was in the past. But if they don't, you know, then you can make them follow, you know, the new ordinance. But here, the structure hasn't changed, the use did. And so we're trying to assert that that non-conformity is still protected, and it would be unreasonable to have to rebuild the structure into a single-family property.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Person? I have one. This is Kelly, if you can't, I don't know if you can see us or not. Can I ask, because obviously, if the property had been built too close to the lot line, that would have been done a long time ago, correct? This property's not new?
It's not a new property, no.
Right. So the current property owner has nothing to say about how it was originally built, correct?
Right.
But why did they then let their, but they do know the rules on rental property in a non-conforming zone, like we have here. Why did they let their rental license lapse?
Well, a good chunk, it actually lapped under the prior owner. He bought it more recently, so part of that was not in our control. But when he bought it, it was physically, it's got a dividing wall, two kitchens, two entry doors, two everything, you know?
I get that, but it also didn't have two rental licenses.
I don't know that, but it lapped before he bought it, I know that much, according to city staff.
So he bought a duplex with one rental license, correct? I'm just asking.
David could probably confirm that, I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's what it looks like happened. Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
Sure.
Mr. Chansky, can you answer that?
To my knowledge, Mr. President, so as I said earlier, our last recorded rental license is expired on May 31 of 2018. From what I understand, Mr. Schwendeman purchased this property in early 2020, so about a year and a half after it expired.
Right, so he bought a single rental, based on our licensing.
It could, to clarify, to your point, Mr. President, it could be licensed, but as a single-family dwelling.
Right. That's right, okay. Any further questions? Tiffany, you're up next.
I have a question for Mr. Chansky. If I'm reading this properly, could it still be used as a duplex if only one of them is rented out? And the other is used for, you know, if Mr. Schwendeman moved in there or something?
In that perspective, how the ordinance has been translated in the past, it could be. If the property owner or an immediate family member, as defined by the code, were living in one unit, then the other unit could be licensed. That is how it's been the city's practice even before I came to the city, was that because then it's still only one license on that property. So in short, in that perspective, then it could be used as a duplex. At least, again, that's how the city has, that's been the practice. But only one license at this time can be issued.
So the structure's non-conformity isn't what's at issue, it's the use of having the two rentals.
And I think Mr. Lengel could clarify that as well.
Mr. Lengel, can you offer any?
My understanding from the February 4th letter, and I agree with you, that this is not a non-conforming structure, it's a non-conforming use issue. As Mr. Chansky indicated in the letter, the two licenses, the rental license allowing it as a duplex expired. There's more than a year went by without using it as a rental. So it cannot be used as a rental duplex anymore. But as he indicated in his letter to Mr. Person, only one unit may be licensed. So you can still license this as a single license for that property. I'm not sure what, you know, what you're going to do with the other half of the building, since it's divided up as a duplex, but it's really a use issue, it's not a structure issue.
Thank you, Attorney Lengel. Mr. Johnson?
I just need a little clarification, because reading Mr. Person's memo, and it's a question for Mr. Chansky or Mr. Lengel, but reading Mr. Person's memo and listening to his statement, he seems to be very concerned about having to tear this building down. I just want to make sure, the City of Brainerd hasn't told Mr. Schwendeman the building must be torn down, have we?
No.
No, it's only just a non-conforming use of a duplex in a single family. Okay, yeah, that's clear.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. What we're looking for is a motion to affirm, reverse, or modify the determination by Community Development Director Chansky to deny a rental licensure at 705 19th Street for non-compliance with the City of Brainerd zoning code. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I move that we affirm the determination by Community Development Director Chansky to deny the rental licensure of 705 19th Street Southeast for non-compliance with the City of Brainerd zoning code, and I so move.
Second.
Second, we have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Attorney Lengel, something that we need to do?
Yeah, I would just ask that we pursue the vote, but that include that we get the findings that were discussed here in writing, and that we come back with a written resolution with those findings at the next meeting. So we have a good record of, in case Mr. Person or his client wants to...
Excellent legal advice. Mr. Johnson, is that part of your motion?
I'd add that to the motion, yeah.
Mr. Stingline, thank you.
Yes, all right.
Any questions on the motion? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
You actually can't. We have a motion, and we have a second, and that's going to end discussion. But I will let you ask it after we vote. And I apologize, it's kind of just the rules of decorum. So I will ask Administrator Bergman to please call the roll on this.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes. That motion carries, Mr. Person, you have a question?
Well, it doesn't help us at this point, but I still would ask the council to reconsider your ordinance, because it's pretty clear to me that what makes this non-conforming under the ordinance is the fact that it's a duplex. The fact that you can live in one half and rent the other half, you allow that? That doesn't make any sense. What makes it non-conforming is it's a duplex, not whether you rent both halves or not. I don't believe the ordinance needs state law.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Chansky, on this? Mr. Person, Mr. Lengel? Hearing none, we will move on. All right, next up is item 9B, which is a resolution supporting the payment of local government aid on time and in full. And let's see who's handling this one. Finance Director Hillman.
So as mentioned at the last council meeting, that the League of Minnesota Cities is having a spotlight, or the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is having a spotlight on different things during the month of February. The February 1st through the 5th was the highlight on LGA and the importance of paying it on time and in full. And one way that the city could support this action by the Coalition is to pass a resolution. The resolution talks about what LGA means to the city and how we can use it to help our citizens on the pandemic and just overall our need for LGA. And so this resolution will go to our lawmakers, as well as other, our senators and representatives, as well as other key lawmakers that were listed in the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Finance Director Hillman? Yes, Mr. Badoe.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah.
So I just want to let the public know the importance of LGA, specifically for the City of Brainerd and the financial situations that we're in. LGA is something that you're going to hear a lot of in the news. It's becoming a partisan issue. I do not believe it should be a partisan issue. And if you are out there in the public and you are really interested in helping the city and its finances, I recommend that you take a look into this and you become familiar with what it is, because you're going to hear a lot of people down at the state making comments about this in one direction or another. And it's very important that we are educated on this, because it's very important to the City of Brainerd and many cities in our area.
Thank you, Mayor Badoe. Finance Director Hillman?
I think one thing that's important, too, is that over 80% of our 2021 budgeted revenues for the City of Brainerd comes from property taxes and LGA. So it's probably split between the two. And so it just kind of states that the city doesn't have a lot of opportunity for other revenues to support our basic services that the city provides. And so again, to speak towards Mayor Badoe's comment of how important it is for the City of Brainerd, that we really don't have a lot of other fees and charges that we have for our city residents, and therefore, the importance of it being paid in full and on time.
Excellent. Any questions of Finance Director Hillman? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution for the payment of local government aid on time and in full? Motion by O'Day?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, we are moving on to numbers. Item, letter 9C, a resolution certifying Brainerd as a telecommuter forward... What? Community. Administrator, I read the thing, too.
Thank you, State...
It was a pregnant pause. Administrator Bergman, please explain what this means.
You bet, thank you, State of Minnesota. So the Department of Employment and Economic Development created this telecommuter forward exclamation mark program in August of 2020. The purpose of the program really is to support and promote the availability of telecommuting options. To be certified by deed as a telecommuter forward community, it's actually a pretty simple process. It's an application and a resolution adopted by the council. That resolution identifies a couple of things. They did ask for a point of contact at the city. We are asking that... We are asking that the Community Development Department, specifically Community Development Director David Chansky be that point of contact. And then it commits to partnering with broadband providers, realtors, economic development professionals, employees, employers, to develop common goals to identify, develop, and market telecommuter incentives and promote telecommuter-friendly workspaces. Again, a pretty simple process. I think it's a relatively new program or certification. And I'd just like to thank Alderman Johnson, who brought this to our attention. And, and again, I think, hey, if we can promote the City of Brainerd and we can let people know that we are a community that encourages telework, great. So thank you, Alderman Johnson, really appreciate that. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Administrator Bergman, and thank you, Gabe. Is there any questions on the resolution? Hearing none. Gabe Johnson would like to make the motion?
Yeah, I'd move to adopt the attached resolution to be a telecommuter forward exclamation point community.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second by Stunek. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is the consideration of the first reading of proposed ordinance number 1514, repealing section 905 and amending section 1400 of the city code. My presenters are David and Paul, and we will expect some harmony on this.
David, you take the tune.
I'll do it. So, Mr. President, with the recent reorganizations in the Parks Department as well as in the Community Development Department, staff took an opportunity to look at different job roles, specifically when it came to the Recreation Coordinator, as well as the new Assistant Planner position. Specifically, we're looking at the Tree Inspector role. The Tree Inspector has been part of the Recreation Coordinator's job description for over 20 years. But we're looking at what the, what the Parks Board is looking to do with recreation programs and, and with Katie's position, as well as looking at how we do the props enforcement process of tree removal for dead and infected diseased trees. We realize that there, there could be some efficiencies had. And so looking at specifically the Assistant Planner position, we saw it was a good fit to have the Tree Inspector position moved to the Assistant Planner position, partially because that position assists in code compliance. And how it works right now is when a tree is tagged for removal by Ms. Kaufman, who is the city's Tree Inspector, she takes, she sends the addresses of those trees to the Community Development Department, who conducts the enforcement. So it's really, it's going across two departments at this point. She thought there will, A, there'd be an efficiency had by keeping it within the one department. Additionally, the Assistant Planner, James Kronvik, he is a very experienced landscape architect, has a degree in landscape architecture, environmental design. Prior to coming and working for the city, he spent seven seasons working for Landsberg Nursery as a landscape architect and is well-versed in all things flora and fauna. So we believe that it was the best route and to serve our community, improve our natural landscape, while also bringing the entire process under a single department, would be to have the Tree Inspector position put under the land, the Assistant Planner position. This was brought before the Park Board on January 26th, and the Park Board unanimously voted to recommend that the city council amend its ordinances linked to the Tree Inspector and Tree Disease Control to reflect these changes and put it under the Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department. Also, as a part of this, too, is a more minor part, the Parks Department was a word of model communities targeted to slow the spread of EAB grant. Yes, it's the entire title. With this change, Assistant Planner, James Kronvik, would also become the manager for that grant. Currently, there are two sections of the city ordinance that address diseased tree control, sections 905 and section 1400. These two sections essentially have the exact same language. However, 905 places the duties of the Tree Inspector under the purview of the city engineer, and section 1400 places the duties of the Tree Inspector under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Director. So our ordinances already contradict each other. So based on the review, what staff is recommending is the council consider repealing section 905 in its entirety and amending section 1400 to place the duties of the Tree Inspector under the purview of the Community Development Director. The reason we changed, we decided to repeal 905 and keep 1400, we felt 1400 is a little more of a robust ordinance. Again, it already covered everything that 905 had plus some, so we felt it was best just to repeal 905 and amend section 1400, as you can see in the proposed ordinance, to read that, that the duties of the Tree Inspector as set forth in this section are hereby conferred upon the Director of the Community Development Department, and the Director may designate a member of the staff to perform the duties of the Tree Inspector. With that, Mr. President, I'll take any questions the council has.
Any questions of Community Development Director Sandy? No. Community Development, I'm sorry, Chansky. I, I, does Paul have to turn in his chainsaw? All right. Mr., I'm sorry, Paul. Anything you'd like to add?
No. Yeah, it was a good process, and during that process, we realized that section 905 and, and section 1400 are literally the exact same, but it does contradict each other. So we really do need to get rid of one of them, so.
I think we can all blame Pritchett for that. All right. So the motion we're looking for is to hold the first reading of proposed ordinance 1514, an ordinance repealing section 905 of the city code in its entirety and amending section 1400 of the city code. Is there a motion to hold the first reading?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I may also recommend, I failed to put it in there, would be to, as we do with all ordinances, would to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance.
And dispense with the actual ordinance reading.
So moved.
Motion by Ted Erickson is our second. Second by Mr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's loosely related. I just saw you mention the Emerald Ashborer grant we received in 2020, and I read on the internet, so I believe it to be a fact, that the, that the Emerald Ashborers larvae cannot just live in minus 20-degree temperatures. So we may have done a fine job in this city over the last week or two, eliminating a significant portion of the EAB problem. So good, good work, everybody.
Credit for the Emerald Ashborer demise. Don't you feel terrible, Gabe Johnson, about all the trashing on the Assistant Community Development Director that you did? And now we've got something for him to do.
Kelly, I wanted to just be light with the Emerald Ashborer thing. I am concerned that we have an Assistant City Planner with the full plate. We are putting more onto that plate. He is going to deserve a raise soon.
Don't touch a tree in the water, Chief. Any further meaningful discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of holding the first reading and dispensing with the actual reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Finally, that motion carries. But I thought that was going to be like about a two-second thing. All right. Next up is item number E, to set the joint EDA and city council workshop. This is David Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll just quickly address Alderman Johnson's concerns. It was in the job description, so he shouldn't be requesting a progress.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, the EDA formed the year 2021 has identified strategic planning as a, as a major goal for them. And as the step one for that process, staff recommends that the EDA and the city council hold a joint workshop to discuss the EDA-City of Brainerd relationship, pretty much kind of who should be doing, what, what is the expectation of the EDA from the council's purview. This was a, a goal that we had helped to have in 2020. COVID had some different plans, and so now we're looking to get that done in 2021. Upon conferring with the city council president, with the, the city administrator, staff is requesting that the city council schedule Monday, March 8th at 5:00 PM for a joint EDA-city council workshop. I have also conferred with the EDA Chair and Vice Chair, and they have both said that they would be available for that date and time for a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Do we need a motion? We should. Is there a motion to approve March 8th, 5:00 PM in the Fire Department for the joint meeting? Motion by Pritchett, second by O'Day. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tansky. We will now move to item 10, which is the public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters on the agenda, not on the agenda, to the attention of the council. We usually ask you to keep it between three and five minutes. And IT Director Strong is running the board, and he'll let you in if you've got something to say. Anybody online have something they want to bring to our attention? Anybody have something to bring to our attention? Nope, we have no callers, says IT Director Strong, so we will move on to item 11, Staff Reports. And we're going to go, I, I don't, I don't know who Casey is.
He's an SEH employee.
Oh, okay. He's SEH employee, so he's not a staff member. So we'll go with, right down the line on the board first and then in person. Mr. Tansky?
Only thing I have, Mr. President, is that the Planning Commission does have their regular third Wednesday of the month meeting tomorrow in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, and then the Parking Commission will be meeting at 4:00 PM on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Eric Sharpton, dear, anything from the HRA?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Acting Police Chief Bastille? We, there you go. We can't hear you, we can't hear you, chief. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I have nothing to add to my monthly report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Magnuson from the PUC?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Stephanie Bastille, you're on staff, anything? This I'd ask.
Probably got an hour-long report.
All right. In the room, Attorney Lengel? No. No, Paul, nothing, nothing. Chris, nothing. Nothing, Todd? Nope, no. Administrator Bergman?
I'm breaking the tie. I have one very brief thing. Downtown Business Coalition had their meeting last week, just to share, they have a lot of really great ideas for downtown Brainerd, and specifically kind of looking at safety issues, and I think they will be bringing some recommendations forward at some point. So just to give you a heads up, and that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Administrator Bergman. IT Director Strong?
Nope, nothing.
Nothing. Okay, we'll take a 20-minute break while the mayor gives his report.
That's right, buckle in. No, we'll keep it fast. To follow up with David Chansky's comment about the Parking Commission, we had our workshop last week, I believe it was, and I just want to say that how impressed I am with that group. The goals that they're setting for themselves and the ideas that they want to tackle run a full breadth of things. And I think you're going to see some, some recommendations come out of that group that may rattle some, some cages, but I think that they've got a real good head on their shoulders, and the city is going to be in a better position for it, so. And then to follow up, just thank you on the Tree Inspect, Inspection, Inspection Clarification from the Park Board. That was something we wanted to get off Katie's plate so that she can partake in other activities. It definitely overlapped her other responsibilities, being that you inspect trees in the summer, and that's when activities are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to council member reports. We'll start with Ted Erickson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission met last Wednesday. We had a workshop. Consultants walked us through several exercises to kind of take the city's vision and implement it through the future land use map and the zoning ordinance through the updating process. And David Chansky mentioned, of course, we meet tomorrow as well. Other things, Northland Arboretum Board of Directors meets next Thursday, the 25th, and then the Fire Advisory Board, next meeting will be on the 23rd. That's it for me.
Thank you. Alderman Erickson, Alderman Pritchett?
I'd like to report that while households across the Brainerd Lakes area were much quieter today, school halls were much louder. And by the time we get to Friday, pretty much every household that has a school-aged child in it will experience some modicum of silence. Teachers are exhausted. I think some of the kids are excited to get back, even though sometimes they don't want to admit it, but they are more willing to now. Again, I would just ask, with this process, trying to get this all coordinated, patience, understanding, and communication are key. All right? Be kinder than you need to be, and think twice before you talk, and read it before you send it. So, all right, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. SP&amp;W Chair, Mr. O'Day?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Stingline?
Nothing.
Alderman Stunek?
I'm good.
PNF Chair, Mr. Johnson?
Three updates just on my commission appointments. BPU meets next week, HRA meets next week, and the EDA canceled their February meeting, but we will be meeting the first Thursday in March.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just have three quick things. The Northside Residents Association met last Wednesday on the Zoom. The Charter Commission did not. We had a little bit of scheduling conflict, but I know you're all excited about the next phase of potential updates, and that'll be coming up here probably within the next 30 days, I would guess. And lastly, I asked SP&amp;W Chair if he would consider the issue from three years ago, which is landlord responsibilities to conduct on premises. That got moved by this council into a separate committee meeting three years later. It still has not come back. He said he'd be willing to do that. That will be, and since that was voted by the council to go to that committee, I think it should be voted to be pulled from that committee and brought to SP&amp;W, and I wanted